Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order please. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcements. The town offices will be closed on Thursday, November 24th, and Friday, November 25th, in observance of Thanksgiving. Excuse me. The Merrimack Transfer Station will be closed on Thanksgiving Day and will be open normal hours on Friday and Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The Town Council meets on the first and third Thursdays in the months of November and December, and the following dates will be applied. These are all, no, they're not all. Regular council meeting, Thursday, December 1st, at 7:00 p.m. Excuse me, here in the Matthew Thornton Room. Thursday, December 15th, again, a regular council meeting at 7:00 p.m. here in the Matthew Thornton Room. Monday, January 9th, at 6:00 p.m. is the beginning of our budget season. Aren't we looking forward to that? Here in the Matthew Thornton Room. And Thursday, January 12th, again, at 7:00 p.m., a regular council meeting. I'd also just like to make a really quick announcement that I want to be able to state my pleasure and thankfulness to all the townspeople for attending the polls and being cooperative, and I think they were appreciative as well, because everything's went well. I want to be able to thank all of our workers that worked at the polls, Lynn Christensen, Diane. And I also want to thank this council for being able to work together to be able to resolve the issues that we have, and that there was successful resi-
A lot of work.
Absolutely. And I think everyone was pleasantly surprised, we had 15,000-something?
Fifteen-five, I think was the final number.
I believe you're right. So considering the high turnout, there were moments of traffic, and we knew that, but everything went very smoothly, and so I want to thank everyone.
They weren't one- and two-hour moments.
No, no, that's right, that's right.
Yeah, we didn't have helicopters flying.
No, we had, no, I sort of missed that. So anyway, we could be thankful for that on our Thanksgiving break. Okay, PFO update, there's nothing new on that. I'm sorry, Eileen, you have announcements?
Excuse me, squ- yeah, there is one thing.
There is.
They're putting that emergency, looks like they're putting that emergency pump in.
Oh, the MVD?
On 101A.
Okay. Okay, then, and that's, thank you. They, has it actually come yet?
No.
Because I know they made a decision, which we've made public, that they're going to be getting the pump from New York when Husick Falls, when that's done.
That's a different one.
MVD was getting the platform ready. Oh, no, it's a different one, you're absolutely right.
Yeah, the Husick Falls one goes over to-
To 4 and 5, that's right.
This is the emergency interconnect with Penachuck.
And that decision was made, and now there.
Right, that's also coming in by truck, but it won't be there until they do the site work.
That's right. And they were hoping, they were planning on it by the completion, by the end of November. And I think we have to make it clear, that's for emergency reasons.
Right.
That's not going to be infused.
Emergency premises, right.
That's right. I'm sorry, Bill, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, the, I had sent a notification to the council yesterday, or the day before, that there was an update from the EPA or a clarification regarding that the 70 parts per train relates to drinking water only. They wanted to clarify the difference, that they were only focusing on PFOAs in the drinking water, and that anything regarding, anything that consumes the contaminated water, whether it be food sources, secondary exposure through vapor inhalation from showering, washing hands, something like that, that they do not, they could not offer an advisory as it relates to those two other-
Sources?
Sources, I guess. And that the, again, that the, it was a, the advisory was a clarification to the original advisory from several months ago, that it relates to just the drinking water, and only the drinking water. Because I had, I had-
Other drinking water, like what?
Well, if there was, I mean, they put out a memorandum from November 15th, which in essence, they said questions have arisen regarding identifying the risk levels for ingestion of the water, and that they can only attest to drinking water, they couldn't attest to food sources or-
Right, right.
The inhalation of the vapors from showering, bathing, that kind of thing. So, that that was something that DES had promulgated, and I had emailed to you and Eileen and the rest of the council.
Thank you.
Because I was prepared to make a motion on it, but if people haven't had the chance to read it, I'd like to at least have everybody have the opportunity to read it, so that my motion can be heard at the next, at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Would you remind me of that, so I can make sure?
I'd be more than happy to.
Okay, Eileen?
Okay. The town of Merrimack invites you to bring the whole family out for the 23rd Annual Holiday Parade and Christmas Tree Lighting Ceremony, which will take place on Sunday, December 4th. The theme this year's parade is the Griswold Family Christmas, like that. And it will kick off at 3:00 p.m. from the Commons Shopping Plaza, 515 DW Highway, travel down DW Highway to Babusick Lake Road, and end at the Town Hall Parking Lot. The Christmas Tree Lighting Ceremony with Santa Claus will begin immediately afterwards at Abbey Griffin Park at approximately 3:45. For any questions, please contact the Parks and Recreation Department at 882-1046, or visit their website, www.merrimackparksandrec.org. The Department of Public Works is pleased to announce the promotion of Wayne Lombard to the position of Equipment Operator 2. Wayne has been with the department for 19 years, and is a long-time resident of Merrimack. That's all I have.
Thank you, Eileen. Comments from the press or public? No rush. Comments from, I'm sorry, recognitions, resignations, retirements, none? Appointments? First item, FE Everett Turnpike Widening Presentation. You can probably come right up, and however you want to sit. Submitted by New Hampshire Department Transportation Project Manager Wendy Johnson. Town Council to be presented with details of the upcoming project, which includes the widening of three segments of the FEW turnpike from two to three lanes in Nashua, Merrimack, and Bedford. Apparently, we have the honor to be the first ones that they will be presenting this to and that. How many do you have to do? How many?
Three.
Three, okay, just the three. So anyway, and it's not going to happen tomorrow, as we've read, you know, from our background, but I'll let you go right ahead and talk about the details.
Wonderful. Thank you for having us this evening and putting us into your schedule. With me tonight, obviously, my name is Wendy Johnson, I'm with NHDOT, I'm the project manager for the project.
I can't hear you very well, I'm sorry. If you can pull it a lot closer.
Closer, is that, is that better?
That is better, thank you.
I'm sort of soft-spoken.
Okay.
Except when I start yelling, you know.
Thank you.
So what we're here to present tonight is Nashua, Merrimack, Bedford, the 13761 FE Everett Widening Turnpike. With us tonight, I have, to my right, I have Ben Martin from CHA, and behind me, I have Jed Merrill from MJ. The department has hired these two consultants to help us design, do the preliminary design for this contract. When I say preliminary, and you hit the nail right on the head, we are, this is the first time we've come out, we were just getting started. We are not near any, you know, we're not near any sort of final design at this point. Really, what we've come to do is tell you that we're coming to town, we want to give you an update on where we're at, and we want to see if you guys have any comments or suggestions for us that we should be incorporating into the contracts, because now's, now's the time to speak up, before we really get started. We haven't gone to a public hearing or anything, so we're, we're very early in the design stage. So basically, what I'm going to do next is I'm going to turn it over to Ben, and he's going to give the actual presentation. So if you have comments or questions, feel free to ask, there's a session at the end for questions as well, if you wanted to wait, it's up to you.
Thank you, Wendy. Have that for sound, is that good?
That sounds good.
Good. Like Wendy said, my name is Ben Martin, I'm the lead engineer on the project, I'm with CHA Consulting. So I'm going to do an overview of the project, and before I get started, I would like to echo my thanks to the council for having us here tonight. An agenda of what we're going to discuss, the presentation itself, we'll kind of go over the entire scope of work of the project. That'll begin with a project overview. We'll talk about the needs that are driving the project, and then we'll look at the individual project segments, and talk about some of the bridges and structures in those segments that are, that are going to be important elements of the project. We'll do an overview of some of the environmental issues we're looking at, and talk about public outreach and public involvement efforts, that'll be part of the project. We'll finish up in talking about the schedule and what to expect, and close things out with questions and comments. So an overview of the project, the existing FE Everett Turnpike, there are three segments of the turnpike that are currently two lanes in each direction. This project would propose to add a northbound and southbound lane through those segments to make a continuous three-lane corridor from exit 8 to the 293 interchange. Part of that will include evaluating five bridges for rehabilitation and/or replacement. There's not much going on at exits and interchanges, there'll be some ramp work at the turnpike itself to accommodate the third lane, but the project really doesn't reach down the ramps to, you know, the side roads and the interchanges and intersections. There are no toll modifications as part of this project.
That you know of.
And-
We have you on tape, so you know, and video, so.
Yeah, but he's just a consultant, he doesn't make a decision.
I know.
He's representing somebody there.
I'm just the messenger. We did want to make a point that the environmental study will include a noise abatement evaluation for the entire project corridor from exit 8 to the 293 interchange. So the needs that are driving the project-
I can assure you, you won't have that question by anybody else.
The project is primarily about improving mobility and safety, so that'll come in the form of congestion relief. We'll also see some safety improvements in the form of updated median treatments, some of the existing safety features, guardrail, things like that, will be upgraded to current standards. And then as part of the project, there's a number of bridges that we'll, we'll get into a little more detail as we go along here, but we'll be addressing bridges and other structures to accommodate the widened turnpike, and also, there is one red-list bridge that'll be addressed as part of the project. So this is an overall overview of the project. This shows the three segments in red. There's the southern, middle, and northern segment, and there is, it's the same image that is on the, I guess, the board farthest to the right over here. We'll, we'll get a closer look at each of these, so don't worry about squinting at that picture. But basically, the southern segment goes from exit 8 to exit 10, the middle segment picks up at exit 11 and goes to the Bedford Toll Plaza, and the northern segment is at the I-293 interchange. So taking a closer look at the southern segment, this is Nashua and Merrimack, it begins in exit 8, and it extends about one and a half miles to the north to exit 10 in Merrimack. Probably the defining feature of this segment is the FE Everett Turnpike Bridge over the Penachuck Brook. This is currently a, the bridge accommodates two lanes in each direction, it's actually two bridges, but each bridge accommodates two lanes in each directions. So in order to accommodate the widening turnpike, this, the bridge would need to be widened to take on that extra lane in each direction. So this is a little closer look at the southern segment. Again, we pick up just north of the exit 8 ramps and go up to exit 10, and fairly central there is the turnpike bridge over the Penachuck Brook, the yellow dot in the image that indicates that location. The middle segment in Merrimack, this is, begins in exit 11, and it heads about 5.3 miles north, and it ends just south of the Bedford Toll Plaza at exit 13. There's a number of bridges in this segment that we'll be looking at as part of the project. The first one is shown there in that picture, that's the turnpike over Greeley Street. That bridge is already wide enough for the three-lane turnpike, so there, we only anticipate overlay paving and some minor rehabilitation work to that bridge. It'll be, the lane markings, pavement markings, will be updated for three lanes, but there is an extensive work proposed there. As we head north, there are two bridges over the turnpike, Babusick Lake Road and also Wire Road. Those bridges currently are not long enough to span a six-lane turnpike, three lanes in each direction, so they would need to be replaced to, to clear the widened turnpike. The Babusick Lake Road Bridge is also a red-list bridge, so that would be evaluated and addressed as part of the project.
What about the Bedford Road Bridge?
I'm sorry?
It's done.
That's done?
Yes.
The South Heagan River Bridge?
No, Bedford Road.
Exit 12.
Exit 12.
Oh, at exit 12, that one is, that one was, I believe that one was completed recently, wasn't it? And it's, and it already-
Recently is not a good term, but-
Well, when it was completed, it was, it was designed with this in mind, so it does, it does span the-
So basically, you're going to be restriping under Bedford Road to make it three lanes?
The turnpike there is not-
The turnpike would need to widen.
Correct, the turnpike is not that wide.
The span of the bridge is wide enough for it.
Right, the bridge is, is wide enough for the turnpike to be widened underneath.
That's what I'm getting at, okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So that bridge would not be-
No, when you, when you do these other two, Babusick Lake and Wire Road, you're going to be shifting those, right? Normally, what you do is you don't build, you build one thing while the other one's still being used, and then you tear the other one down.
Yeah, I mean, we don't know exactly how they'll be replaced yet, we're, that's, we are very early in the process, as Wendy mentioned, and we're exploring alternatives now. We haven't, we haven't arrived at a preferred alternative for how they would be replaced, but, you know, we are considering all alternatives at this point.
Some of the alternatives that we're looking at, I mean, they're, they're basically sketches, is, you know, like you said, one is an offline alignment. Another one would be to do the project on alignment, but we have to look at traffic volumes and kind of get you guys' feel for, would it be better to close it and have a shorter construction, or would it be better to do more alternating and have a longer construction, but yet put people out of their way a little bit less, so. So that'd be something that we're eventually going to be coming to you guys with, but that's the sort of thing we'd like to have feedback on.
More feedback, excuse me. Gotcha.
Yeah, so if you, if you have any preference, we'd certainly like to know that.
You should cross over with the school board.
The school board, that's an excellent-
That's a good idea.
Cross over with the school board, because they've, all the buses come through there on Babusick Lake Road.
Yeah. As we get, we, we'll talk a little bit, a little later on in the presentation, about all the public involvement efforts, and that'll include some, some public informational meetings, which are much more in-depth than what we have here, and we're just not at that point yet, we're really just starting to get into it, so. But this is, this is just the very beginning of our public outreach efforts. So we talked about Babusick Lake Road and Wire Road. Just north of Wire Road, the FE Everett Turnpike goes over Babusick Brook, that's carried by a twin concrete box culvert, which you see in the very bottom picture there. So we'll, we'll need to address that structure in order to accommodate the widened turnpike, and we're also looking at to, to make sure that we're accommodating hydraulic needs of Babusick Brook itself. So it's kind of a two-pronged look at that. The last structure to talk about in the middle segment in Merrimack is the FE Everett Turnpike over the South Heagan River. This is also known as the Merrill's Marauder Bridge. This was recently completed, and it is already constructed to carry the third lane, so there isn't much of any work proposed at this bridge. It would be striping to introduce the third lane, but it's, the bridge that's in place now is adequate to take the widened turnpike. This is a summary figure for the middle segment, and kind of chose the location of the things we just discussed, so at the very bottom of the image there, that's exit 11, so that, that yellow dot is the turnpike over Greeley Street. Again, we mentioned that would, that'll likely just be paving only. The next, the next one up is Babusick Lake Road, and to the north of that is Wire Road, and then immediately to the north, or I guess, kind of northeast, is the turnpike bridge over Babusick Brook. The northern segment in Bedford, this will pick up kind of at the northerly limits of the exit 13 Bedford Toll Plaza interchange, and this will go through the I-293 interchange in Bedford, it's about 1.3 miles long. You can see on the lower-left image there, the Route 3 Bridge over the FE Everett, that was one that was recently completed, and is already long enough to span the widened turnpike. And this shows that. So this is another image of the northern segment. Again, Route 3 is already in good shape to clear the turnpike, so there, there's no work proposed at that bridge.
Not bridge-wise, but you've got a lot of rock to take out up there.
That's correct, yes. When the bridge was constructed, you can kind of see it as you drive through, they, they did the rock, it's necessary for that, and then it kind of steps out. So yeah, that, there would be some rock excavation, presumably as part of that effort. So this is a summary of the key structures and bridges that we covered. In the southern segment, the FE Everett over Penachuck Brook. In the middle segment, there is the FE Everett over Greeley Street, and then Babusick Lake Road, and Wire Road over the turnpike, and lastly, the turnpike over Babusick Brook. There are also some smaller, there's three smaller culvert structures, and they carry unnamed streams, so they're not very glamorous to talk about in a presentation, but those will also be addressed as part of the project to, to make sure that not only are they adequate to carry the streams, but that they're long enough for the turnpike to be wired above them. A big element of this project is going to be looking at and evaluating some, some key environmental issues. That'll include wetland and waterway impacts, so that will be the replacement of the Penachuck Bridge and the Babusick Brook crossings, and also any wetland and stream impacts within the project corridor. I mentioned earlier, there's the noise evaluation. This will actually encompass the entire corridor, so beginning at exit 8 all the way to 293, it's not, it's not concentrated just on the segments, we're looking at the, at the entire portion of this project. So it does, it does go through the gap sections for the noise, the noise assessment. We'll also be looking at water quality, stormwater runoff, that'll be both in, during construction and the permanent conditions, and there's a fairly extensive evaluation of any rare species that might be in the project corridor. So public outreach efforts, there's, there'll be a lot of early consultation with towns and other stakeholders, public officials meetings, and then, like I said before, public informational meetings, which will be much more in-depth than these, we will actually start getting into alternatives and different options for, for different elements of the project. Some of the outreach and involvement efforts will include a periodic newsletter for any project updates. There is a project-specific website that will be online very soon, and we'll provide the address to that at the end of this. Now, all of that culminates in the public review and a comment period of the environmental assessment document, which leads finally to a public hearing, which would finalize the NEPA process. So the project schedule, we are anticipating completing the environmental assessment in 2017. This will include all of the preliminary design alternatives and the public involvement and outreach efforts that will all come together in the hearing also in 2017. The hearing kind of marks the end of the preliminary, engineering preliminary evaluation of the project, and from there, we'll go into final design, which we anticipate will be complete in 2020, and the project can begin as early as 2021, go to construction as early as 2021.
Three plus years to design?
For final design, yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, thanks for coming, and I really don't have a question more than, more than a statement to make, but this is five years too late, and I know you can't, you work for DOT, but whatever we say, I hope it gets back to the right people. 2021 is a little embarrassing, and I don't know how the rest of you feel, but this really isn't about Merrimack, it's not about Merrimack residents, because we get into the traffic for five minutes and you're getting off the exit in your home. This is really about the growth, and I'm saying this in a positive way, it's for the growth of communities of Manchester and Concord and their, and their suburbs, because the jobs that they're going to Massachusetts for and coming home, this is vital. You can't spend five, seven years, because people start choosing to live somewhere else, and, and that, this corridor is horrible, as you know, so I'm not telling you anything you don't already know. It's just the urgency, I think, for economic growth, people talk, a lot of talk, and you know, move, move to this, and then they say they want economic development, and they want Southern New Hampshire, and New Hampshire to be successful, but if the legislature doesn't fund this properly and get it on the books faster than that, it's really kind of sad. And, so I'm not dumping on, on you, I, I just wish that they would take what, what's really going on more serious, if they're really serious about economic growth, Manchester and north of Manchester and those towns, Boe, Dunbar, and Lit, you know, you know, that's where it's important.
No, they're more interested in putting a fourth lane on I-93 than they are in mitigating this issue here.
This is a major economic corridor.
From a legislative perspective.
In Merrimack, Fidelity with 6,000 employees, they're not affected by this traffic jam, so they're, you know, they're safe, you know what I mean, yeah. They're, because they're, they're just entering it and leaving it, but if they wanted to buy a house in, say, Goffstown or Concord and come to Fidelity, then now they're, now they're not happy, because now they're taking maybe an hour to go home to get into that. So, no, I said, that's it, thank you.
Anyone else? Jackie, and then Tom, then Bill?
Yes. I'm, I'm one of the lucky ones, I get off at exit 11, and things are very clear until exit 11, and then. Do you think that there's room for the extra lane all the way along? Is there physically room to add the extra lane?
Within the segments we showed?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Do you, is there any land-taking that you're going to need to do?
So we, we haven't, because we're still assessing the alternatives, we haven't gotten to that point yet. Currently, we have our staff going through, trying to figure out where the, the right-of-way lines are and who owns what. The right-of-way width, as far as we're aware at this time, is fairly substantial through the FE Everett Turnpikes. We don't see where we're going to have too many needs in that location for the highway itself. One of the things we, like Ben was mentioning, was we're going to have water quality features, so there may be some needs to acquire land for those. And typically, we try to find vacant-type properties, if, if that's a concern. We don't know, not knowing what we're going to do for Wire Road and Babusick, I know I get it, Babusick Road, what we're, what we're going to do, because we're not sure if we're going to keep on alignment or go to the, go to one side or the other. So as, as the alternatives develop, we'll have more of an idea on that, but for right now, we're, we're not anticipating huge, huge strip acquisitions or anything like that, so.
And who, who's funding the project?
Excellent question. The project is actually funded by the Turnpike Capital Program, so it's paid with toll money, essentially, so. And to put everybody's mind at ease, we already have the money, so there's no toll increase with this project, so.
What do you mean, you already have the money? There's not going to be a bond?
That's twice, this time from DOT.
There'll be a bond.
We have, Turnpikes has the, the money already in their, in their financial plan, where it's in the capital investment program.
Dan, they could have done it five years.
I know, I know.
That, that's true.
Less expensive.
They could do it now, is what it says.
Right? I mean, that's, that's the frustration, if you want to hear any, it's just, it's five years too late, you know, but so hurry, get it done.
No, it's understood completely, and-
I would hope people in Concord would understand what it really means to the rest of the state. Again, it is in Nashville, it's not Merrimack, it's not, it's not us, it's, it's further north.
Yeah, it's the whole corridor, which lead, which leads to north, so it's a very good point. One of the, one of the things that does take time, I know you look at the schedule like this, and you say, geez, it's going to be three years, four years. A lot of things that take time, not only that's the design, but also to acquire any right-of-way we might need, that takes a substantial amount of time, and environmental permitting also takes a lot of time, especially when you're talking about a huge corridor like this, because if you took a look from exit 8 all the way to the I-293 split, that's about a 20-mile length, and that's, that's pretty big undertaking, so.
And there's a lot of water in those areas.
Tom, you want to make comment?
Yeah, you said you had the funding, yet the discussions I heard at the legislature were that we're going to be- Yet the discussions I heard at the legislature were that there were going to be toll increases that were gonna go to support the funding of this.
I had asked that question, and I was told we were all set. I can double-check and get back to you.
Okay. Now, there wasn't any, the, the, there was no increase proposed for Merrimack.
That's correct.
Most of the other ones were proposed at the other, uh, at the other toll plazas.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, so that was, that was, you know, part of the... The last time they had the argument in the legislature about this process, which I attended two years ago, they were talking about the need to do that in order to, uh, satisfy the bonding, the bonding authorities, um, that they had sufficient revenue to support the, the bond payments. And that was what they were proposing to do at that time. So, um, you know, from my perspective, it's just a, a double-check of where you're going. Eileen, when's Route Three Bridge supposed to be done?
Twenty twenty-one, I think it is.
Oh, how about that? Look at that. Okay, that means three bridge projects in this town, in the core of the town, in the same year. Fourteen thousand cars a day on Route Three. Okay? If three bridges over three of the main arteries in the community.
And then about a mile apart.
Mile apart, that's correct.
It's not...
Yeah.
True, and if, and what I'm hearing is, is you don't want all that work to be concurrent. And, and this is, again, those are the...
Traffic around.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll divert it into the river.
Well, see, the difficulty is, as soon as they see a jam up the one, the turnpike, they get off and get on Route Three.
Correct.
Yeah, definitely.
And so if all of those, all of those arteries are clogged, you're, 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 you know, it's bad enough now that we get gridlock when that happens. You know, but, you know, it'll really be, uh, it'd really have an impact with those three projects going, four projects going on at the same time.
Yeah, and I think Ben sort of hinted at it, the first project could start as early as twenty twenty-one. So we were planning on staggering the work out, because like you said, it is a lot to have that large segment of, of work. But it's, it's, it's nice to hear that you're on the same page.
Now that you don't have toll booths at exit twelve, it now becomes easy for people to get off at exit twelve and use Bedford Road to bypass construction going on in the north end of town, or the south end of town. Probably more applicable for people to live in the north end of town, I would think.
You all done, Tom?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Peter Bragg.
Yes.
Thank, Bill, thank you, Mr. Appreciate it.
Is there, was there any discussion of adding a full interchange at exit twelve, creating a northbound on-ramp and a southbound off-ramp?
It was discussed, um, when they did the feasibility study to see if this project, 'cause they started with a feasibility study, um, and it was not included as part of this project.
Do you know the reason why?
Not off the top of my head, but I'll get back to you.
That would be great.
There's no room.
I kind of figured there's no room, but just like...
I, I know that there is a house in the way, but...
More than one.
I don't know if there's more reasons than that, so I'd think...
There's more than one, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not even looking at that. I'm looking over at the Bedford roadside.
Both sides.
Where you have, where you have twenty feet between the edge of the, the edge of the highway and, uh, and between the two roads.
Since we're talking about the, since we're talking about the feet, north and south, this council, on several occasions, has talked about the airport access road, the southbound traffic getting off onto the Merrimack exit, and the northbound traffic getting off on the Merrimack exit and emerges like this. And the way that the road was designed is you got a blind spot in both directions where you cannot see oncoming traffic until they are on top of you.
Yeah.
Uh, but that's not, that's not a turnpike issue.
How's it not a turnpike?
It's not, it's not the turnpike.
But it is good to, for you to take back.
Yeah, I, I'm still trying to figure out what he's talking about. You said the airport access?
Exit thirteen.
Exit thirteen was Arc Drive. When you get off the off-ramp...
Southbound.
Southbound. You do a one-eighty, and now you're headed straight towards the airport. You do a, you do a two o'clock turnoff on, to get off onto Route Three, which is in Bedford, but a left takes you, left takes you to Yanni's down towards the bridge replacement on Route Three. Make a, make a right-hand turn. That brings you into downtown Merrimack. As you are coming off that road, you, you have to deal with merging traffic coming northbound that is getting off at that same exit. And the way that they designed the berm is once you come underneath the F E T and you look at the right, you do not have the sightlines, or you have very limited sightlines to gauge that traffic. The same is also applicable for the northbound traffic getting off there. You have to lean over to your left and look to see who is merging with you at that same time. And we've, we've, we've talked about traffic calming. I don't think you can physically, I don't think the way that the engineering is designed, that you can cut back on that berm to create more of a sightline. But since I've got somebody from the DOT here, thank you for coming, by the way.
This is right near that golf, the golf range.
The golf range. Thank you, Jackie.
Yes.
That really needs to be looked at. If, if, if you're looking at the widening of the F E T as a whole, then you ought to really take a look at that as well, if possible. And I know it's separate from this conversation, but... The last question is, is has, was there any discussion about overhead tolling on the Bedford Road Bridge?
There was not any conversation about, um, about that. There is an open road tolling contract that's coming out within the next year or so. And that's, um, that's gonna be on the, at the Bedford Main Line Toll Plaza. That's where that's gonna be going. So that's under the design phase, and a different person will be coming out to talk to you about that.
'Cause I know Council Mayor and has talked about this on numerous occasions, said it'd be very easy for them to pull that plaza back to, to try and capture some of the lost toll revenue that cannot be acquired because of the traffic going to, to the airport. So it, so I, is it fair to say that, that plaza is staying put for the time being, to your knowledge?
To my knowledge, I believe the plaza is staying, staying put. Um, the, the next person that's gonna come talk to you about the open road tolling project, he would know why each one of the, the structures was where they were. But I will let him know that that'll be a, a question that he can address.
And then lastly, just to, to echo Council Dwyer's comments, I agree with him. I think you, I think you're five years too late, and I think once you start building in twenty twenty-one, whether it gets done in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, I guarantee you, twenty twenty-six, you're gonna be talking about making it four lanes. And I think that's really the conversation, is four lanes.
It's only money.
Let's get three for now.
Yeah, but, but, but you know what's, but you know what, Dan? The three lanes, you, you have no idea what the traffic is, you have no idea what development is gonna be like.
There's no lane, land for four, for eight, and now it's eight. It's too much.
But you have no idea what the development's gonna be up, like in places like Hooks at Dunbar and Goffstown. You have no idea, which is why you, you're gonna build three. Everybody would be happy with three, and then you, it's, it's, it's like clockwork. We'll be talking about four lanes at some point.
You can't have four. There's no land. There's no future for four. It's always gonna be three forever. That's it. Then they'll find another project.
Well, let's get three first, you know?
Okay. Finley?
Actually, from, from you guys wanting to expedite everything and move it forward, it's, it's, it's all mine. We sit here and we balance and juggle as well. So while we might think it may, would be cheaper, uh, to do it all at once, it isn't necessarily so. For, you know, the funding, you know, we get it. I mean, unless you're shovel-ready and you have stimulus money that somebody's gonna give you to finish your airport access road early. But it doesn't work that way normally. So I appreciate the expansion. It, it is necessary. Timing is whatever they can make it work with. But, and I do want to, I didn't realize that that ramp didn't count because it's off the turnpike. But it is important. I sit on the Highway Safety Committee, I'm the liaison to that committee. And we actually have sent letters to the state. They at first said, we're gonna knock the berm down. And then at a later date, a year later roughly, they said, no, we're not going to. It's fine the way it is. But the reality is, it's not fine. It is a hazard. Uh, the, it's the southbound lane that has the most difficulty, south, uh, the south ramp on, at exit thirteen. It, it comes in as a single lane. The northbound ramp comes in with two lanes. These, the middle lane, their left lane on the northbound ramp, is a left turn or a straight ahead. Uh, so they don't have to do anything. They already own it. It says yield. Both sides say yield to the oncoming traffic. But there's nothing to yield for. When you own the lane, you're yielding to nothing. It's just you own it. So the southbound lane is the problem. Eliminating the berm would be the, the probably least expensive alternative if they could look into it. They said they didn't want to, so anything you could do would be greatly appreciated, I'm sure, by the Highway Safety Committee and the people who use it. Um, I just was wondering, you might not have, you might not have any answer for it, but I didn't know if you had a general thought on cost of the project, um, or is it just too early to know?
Well, we've, we've got a budget right now, and our budget is about seventy-one million dollars, including P E right-of-way acquisitions and construction. So it's a, it's a lot of money.
Yep. Okay.
Seventy-one? Tom?
Thanks.
Thank you.
And, and thank you for coming and talking to us about it. I, uh, I had a couple of questions. Echoing what, what you've been hearing about the timing on this schedule. Every night when I come home, I work in Manchester, and every night when I come home and turn the radio on, I hear the traffic report. And at the end, they always say, and of course in Merrimack, between exits ten and eleven, it's backed up and you're not moving anywhere. Um, because that's where it chokes down at eleven because of that short stretch that goes three between ten and eleven. And, um, it, it backs up like crazy there. And it's on the news every night, uh, that Merrimack's got a problem. And, uh, it just seems a little silly that we're continuing to deal with that forever and ever and ever. Um, another question that I had was, and I don't know if you have anything to do with it, but, uh, the project that they're almost finished with in Manchester, from two ninety-three north, it looked at first like they were gonna try and expand that to three lanes, and they don't appear to have done so. It's two lanes. They put all this effort into the median. They put all kinds of effort into exit four and exit, uh, five, mostly exit four, getting on and off, and it's still only two lanes through there. So I'm not sure what our overall intent is. We're gonna bring three lanes up to two ninety-three and hope people split off from there, but they're still headed up towards Concord, and so there's still a huge amount of traffic, making it incredibly difficult to get out of there at five o'clock.
So instead of Merrimack, they'll be saying, and of course, in Manchester.
And Manchester, too. I mean, you know, if you clear up, if you clear up here, you're gonna just move that, that bottleneck point. And so I, I'm hoping someone's taking a bigger picture than I'm seeing, driving it every day, uh, because it's, it's, it's a serious problem, and it's not getting better. And I know a ton of money was spent on that project. Why they did all of the median work, I don't understand how that improved things, except to give them a little bit wider concrete shoulder than the grass that was there. And I presume that helps safety, but it doesn't help traffic flow. And, and so, and I know early on you said safety was one of your major issues, and, and I appreciate that. But we need to get people not to be hitting each other, 'cause any accidents in there cause major grief. And there's been multiple ones in the last couple of days. Cars burning and, and cars hitting the, the median and all kinds of weird stuff that's been going on. The, I guess the, you answered the question about the toll booths. There's no intention of this project to move it. There's no intention that you're aware of to move the toll booths, simply to change them to high-speed tolling.
That's correct.
Okay, and so this project stops short of that whole interchange and then starts only up near two ninety-three, where next down to two lanes again?
Yeah.
Okay. And the whole, uh, concept of, uh, things that we've heard about in the past when they've talked about tolls and stuff like that with respect to the highway, contingent upon Merrimack taking over Continental Bypass and, you know, things of that nature. Is any of that involved in this discussion at all, or the ownership of the, the different highways or roads through town?
No.
Stuff like that. So you're strictly looking at widening from two to three lanes? Somebody else's problem to deal with all those other issues?
Yeah, basically, that's what's sort of why we have a, a reduced, or, you know, it's a lot of money, seventy-one million dollars, is we're, we're trying to get into the third lane, kind of a, uh, get that taken care of, and then just solely stick to the turnpike, 'cause it is, it is turnpike-funded, so.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. I think that's great. Um, obviously, there are things we'd love to see, like the Wire Road Bridge or Bedford Road Bridge rebuilt or expanded, because it's only two or two and a half lanes the way it got built. And unfortunately, it's new enough that I know you're not gonna take over responsibility to help that. But, um, if there wasn't any inclination on your part to, to do something with that bridge, we'd certainly encourage an effort to try and get in there and widen it. Or, as Bill suggested, putting in a, a four-way interchange there instead of just the, the two that are there now. I guess that's all I really had to offer at this point. Thank you very much for your efforts.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Paul?
Sorry. I have a personal question, because I get hit with it all the time. I live right near the Wire Road Bridge. And you guys have gone out and did some surveying, I take it, in that area. And you have marked where you believe the right-of-way is for the turnpike in that area?
I don't believe we've done that yet. So I'm not sure what you're seeing for, for markings or flagging.
I'm seeing, um, points in the ground, uh, surveying stakes, surveying flags, things of that sort in that area. See, my neighbors are asking me because they think I know.
I'm not exactly sure what you're seeing, but at this point, if you're seeing stakes and flags, it's because they're trying to, to actually do their surveys or they're setting points that they feel won't be disturbed by construction. So that's, if that's what I'm thinking that you are seeing, you know, they're, they're, they're orange or are they white and green? Do you, do you know?
Orange, orange, green, yellow.
Yep.
Yeah. So this, yeah, that's probably what you're seeing. Unless I saw it specifically.
I just don't wanna give you a number.
Yeah, give me my number, no problem.
I think we're all set. Thank you very much. Are there any questions you want to ask from us?
Well, we do have one. The, uh, the website will be up soon.
Excellent.
It's everittturnpikewidening.com. They'll have a lot of information on the project. I think that should be out very shortly.
Including my phone number, so. But yes, thank you very much for having us. Um, like, like I said, the only thing that we're certainly gonna be wanting to come back to talk to you about, to kind of food for thought, is we're gonna wanna be knowing about the traffic control when we do get into the bridges, which you'd like to see. Um, are, are diversions, detours, are those better than just closing the road off completely? You know, we're gonna be looking at that. Um, I know one of the roads has a sidewalk on it. Um, are you guys gonna wanna perpetuate the sidewalk? Do you want a sidewalk on both of the bridges? Um, so those are gonna be questions that we're, we're gonna wanna know. So, um, if you guys could consider those things, and we'll be back.
I'm sure the planning board will weigh in.
I was gonna say, we should have the planning board and the, and Kyle, Public Works, have their input, because they're more creative than me anyhow, when it comes to that kind of stuff. Better ideas of what we might want, but...
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
That didn't hurt too much, right?
Not yet, not this time.
Well, I said for now. Uh, could I please, we're gonna do five-minute recess.
All right, before, before you go too much further.
Okay, I'd like to reconvene the meeting, please. And let's move on to the next agenda item. Town adoption of RSA seven-nine-dash-H taxation of certain chartered public school facilities, submitted by Gate City Charter School for the Arts Executive Director Karen. Okay, I should've asked how to pronounce it. Let me give it a, let me give it a try. Savasko. Right on. So why don't you come on up? This is informational only. There'll be no decisions tonight. Gate City Charter School for the Arts provide information to the town council regarding this RSA. And you can introduce your partner in crime. Just bright green.
There we go. Um, um, thank you so much for having us. I'm Karen Savasko. I'm the Executive Director at Gate City Charter School for the Arts. And this is, um, Bill Spinelli. He's the Chairman of our Board of Trustees.
Welcome.
So thank you so much for having us here this evening. Uh, the Gate City Charter School for the Arts is located at seven Henry Clay Drive in Merrimack. On behalf of our Board of Trustees and our teachers and staff, and most importantly, on behalf of our students, uh, we're here this evening to ask the town of Merrimack to adopt RSA seventy-nine-dash-H. Um, it was a piece of legislation that was passed with bipartisan support in the New Hampshire Legislature in two thousand fifteen. It, uh, the RSA seventy-nine-H would provide financial relief to a public charter school that leases commercial facilities and pays property tax through the lease. By assessing the portion of the facility that our school leases at a maximum of ten percent its commercial value, the result is a reduction in... percent its commercial value, the result is a reduction in fees paid by the public charter school and charges applied through our monthly lease payment. In August of two thousand and fourteen, the Board of Trustees at the Gate City Charter School for the Arts entered a ten-year lease on the first-floor space located at seven Henry Clay Drive in Merrimack. And through that lease, we're paying approximately thirty thousand dollars a year in property taxes. You looked it up?
It's thirty, for the record, it's thirty-eight thousand.
Thirty-eight, so that's, yeah, more than thirty thousand then. As a public charter school authorized by the New Hampshire State Board of Education and operating under RSA one-ninety-four-B, we receive per pupil funding from the state of New Hampshire. Those funds of approximately sixty-five hundred dollars per pupil are needed for our operational costs, which include the facilities, salaries, and of course, the most important for our students, the curriculum costs. The adoption of RSA nine, seventy-nine-h would ensure that more of the funds that we receive from the state of New Hampshire to operate our public charter school would go directly to educating our students through our arts-integrated curriculum. To share a little bit about our curriculum, we're very excited about our school. Our students find academic success through our approach to teaching and learning that infuses the arts across all subject areas. Engagement in the arts develops academic understanding. Arts integration as a method of learning presents opportunities to develop problem-solving skills, foster critical thinking and follow-through. It develops public speaking and communication skills in our students. Through arts integration, students focus on collaboration and ingenuity. Many of our students find success at our school because of our small school environment. Some were failing academically or struggling socially before they enrolled in our school. Our focus on community affords attention to social and emotional development, and our students are thriving. Gate City Charter School for the Arts is an innovative leader in the education of students, preparing them for success in the twenty-first century global economy. We are a kindergarten through eighth-grade public charter school with currently a hundred and seventy-three enrolled students. Our charter allows for a maximum enrollment of a hundred and eighty students. We are designed to be a small school environment. Our students reside in over a dozen communities in southern New Hampshire. These are families who drive every day to gather at our Merrimack location, because our school is providing successful education experience for their students. When they come here, they're shopping here, they're, they're eating here. We're buying all of our sandwiches and cupcakes at Buckley's, we love it, so. We really do. We enjoy being part of the Merrimack community. We're happy members, we're contributors, we collaborate with all of our neighbors nearby. We're located right near the YMCA in Merrimack, so we're really proud to be part of the Merrimack community. So we're asking for Merrimack's support to, to ensure the long-term, long-term sustainability of our school, so that we can continue to be a part of this community and continue to serve our students.
I wonder if you could go back to your beginning, when you started talking about the law, and you read out some words, and, and I understood each of the words in English, but I didn't understand what you read.
Okay.
As to the implication to Merrimack or to you. Had something to do with tax relief and, and the less or paying taxes, and you getting something, and, and reimbursing or somehow working with the Town of Merrimack so that we do or don't lose money? Or what, what, help me understand what you're asking for in the beginning.
Right, so, so this really is a, a support of our school, so it, and it would result in a loss of money to Merrimack through those property taxes. However, it's not a total exemption of all of the property taxes we pay. So we currently lease about half of the building at seven and Henry Clay Drive. So the building owner passes on those property taxes to us as tenants through the lease, so we, we would then result in a reduction. So the, the building owner would receive that reduction for the portion of the property taxes on the space that we're leasing, and then he, as the building owner, would pass that on to us as the tenants of the building through our monthly payment.
So prox, so does that mean if it's thirty-eight, half of that would be nineteen thousand? Okay, then I don't.
Well, help us understand.
We, we don't know how much of the property, do you take up the whole property?
Half of it.
Half of the property, and would that be the building? And so, it would be, it wouldn't be thirty-eight thousand then, it would be?
No, no, that's half the taxes.
Oh, half the taxes for the parcels, thirty-eight thousand dollars.
So we'd be, we're, we're asking to then pay ten percent of that.
Ten percent. So thirty-eight thousand.
Go ahead.
Thirty-eight hundred.
Okay, so what, what, what's the decision? What would it, what would the implications be if the total bill is thirty-eight thousand, and you're saying you do half of it?
Thirty-eight is half the bill.
Oh, is half the bill? Okay, I missed that part.
Right, it's three-point-four million dollars.
I was going to say, that's pretty good. Yes, Dan.
Thirty-eight thousand is half of the tax bill on that property.
Right, but he's.
You have to put your line.
Did you say that the property was three and a half, three-point-four million?
Three-point-four.
So not half the property?
Million, so half of.
Yeah, I gave you that, did you, I gave you the property card.
Oh, right.
Yep.
I thought that was over something else. I didn't look at that, thank you. I did get it.
Oh, yeah?
I thought it had to do with something else.
We had a bottleneck over there.
Yes.
Yes.
The building is forty-five thousand six hundred.
Built, excuse me, Mr. Spinelli?
You have to push the button, there you go. Which one? Oh, okay. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. We occupy seventeen thousand eight hundred and fifty square feet. The building's forty-five thousand six hundred square feet. So that's the division on the thirty-eight, oh, excuse me, it's, what are you saying? It's sixty, seventy-six thousand is the total taxes on the building? Okay.
So about thirty, which is what you said.
Yeah, we said thirty in the beginning, so what, what this bill would do for, for us would give us another twenty-seven thousand that we can use in the operation of our school. I mean, that's how we look at it. I know you guys don't look at it that way, but that's how we look at it.
But that's implications, we need to understand.
The RSA was written that way, that's what the whole thing's about. Which, that's why I wanted to make a comment.
But I think we need to all understand what that means.
Right.
Yes.
Go ahead, Dan, continue.
What I wanted to say was, I wanted people to kind of understand, as some of you know, I'm also a landlord, so what I want people to understand at home, if they're not getting it, is this is a beautiful building, it's over three million dollars assessed value on Henry Clay, if someone wants to go see it. And what I was having a side conversation with Tom was, there's only one person who gets a tax bill, and that is the owner of the building. So you have to look at this owner as a landlord. He's leasing, renting, whatever, whatever his leasing agreement is doing, but the fact is, there is someone getting a really big tax bill on that very valuable property. And so, the details of whatever tenants come into the building, I personally don't care. And I don't know why anybody else would care. You do, because you have an RSA and you can get some tax benefits, and I support that wholeheartedly. But I wanted people at home and everybody to understand that the property owner pays his taxes on that building. And so, the uses of what happens inside the building is a different subject matter. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay, Jackie?
I want to echo, Dan. I'm a landlord also, and I have found over the forty years that the, the property tax does not necessarily go up, and it's a separate market from rent. And people mix up those two concepts, and I know that they overlap a little, no question, but they're really two different things. And I agree, it's a beautiful building, it's the building that pays taxes, or the land under it with the improvements. It's not the tenants, what the tenant, the tenants come and go, the owner is the one that gets the bill. What he does is his own business. He gets the bill, and we expect to get paid. And I understand the concept, and it's all about the, this, that RSA is all about the lease. It's not like another school that owns their property, or a church that comes in, owns their property. It's very cut and dried. They own the building, they're completely tax-exempt. Are you, the other thing that I was curious about is maybe not covered on, I didn't read the entire RSA just enough to make sense of it. Are you a nonprofit or a not-for-profit?
We are a nonprofit organization.
You are a nonprofit?
So we are a five-oh-one-C-three organization, and we are.
And do you submit at every year a, a reaccreditation? I mean, I'm really talking about money-wise, some reaccreditation, that you still qualify?
Uh, e- each year, well, as a charter school, we reapply our charter every five years with the state.
Oh, yeah.
As a five-oh-one-C-three, we report to, to the Secretary of State. We also, um, submit an annual audit every year to the DOE and to the Secretary of State.
Yeah, that's, that's right. Because.
The Secretary of State?
I'm sorry.
Five-oh-one-C-three, it's a federal, that's a federal designation. Are you a nonprofit in the state of New Hampshire, or do you have a five-oh-one?
Five-oh-one-C-three.
Three, so you have a federal designation?
Mm-hmm.
So there's an annual thing you have to send in every year to the feds, right? About your financial conditions?
Yes, yes, we do. Submit it.
We're audited every year.
Yeah.
Full audit, full audit every year.
In, in that case, I, I, because I was going to suggest that if we entered into anything like this, we'd want to see that number, but we wouldn't really have to with the designation. But my real concern is not only the property tax that we would be going without, but we would be going off without, I think, a certain amount of money that the state pays us as a school, and there's no school people here to tell me if this is so or not, but we're judged by how many students we have and the hours that they attend our school.
As I wish.
And any kids that go off to a charter school, is my understanding, if they're Merrimack kids, we no longer get that money, so we.
And that's where the sixty-five hundred comes from.
Oh, uh-huh. So we not only go without money for our public school, but we also go without tax money. And that, that's, you know, that starts to add up.
But our public schools would not be educating those children, so they wouldn't be incurring those expenses theoretically.
Correct.
Oh, well, you still have classrooms to.
Well, I know, but we don't have to hire another teacher or two to take on the additional sixty students.
We can all get out all night.
Yeah, we can argue.
That's the whole debate about, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Okay, because I went, I went, well, I, I went to Porridge School through high school. Okay, so, you know, and they're, they're non-tax because they're, we're this affiliation. Okay? I mean, this is, if you look at the property card, this is Class A office space. Compared to what you would normally see in a normal school building, it's hardly the same quality for what they've got to use, but anyway. So from my perspective to look at this, I, I, I need to take a look at your lease, I need to take a look at your tuition agreement, whatever you have with your parents, the parents in terms of what their responsibilities are. And, and how many students are from Merrimack?
We have nineteen students from Merrimack.
So ten, less than ten percent of your student population is from, from Merrimack?
That's correct.
More than ten.
It's, it's about eleven percent.
One-eighty is their total?
One-eighty, I was counting, I'm sorry.
One-seventy-three is their total?
I was just out. Excuse me.
And, and as a charter public school, our, our families do not pay tuition. We operate solely on the funding that we receive from the state.
Do you do fundraising, too?
We do, just as any public school would fundraise. We are, we are.
But basically, the state runs the school financially? The state money is adequate to run the school?
They provide approximately ninety-one percent of our monies.
No tuition, though, you just said.
No tuition.
So that's made up with your.
Fundraising.
Car washes or whatever.
Big sales.
See, I'm, I'm semi-torn, I definitely have a lot to learn about your request, and, and I agree with Tom's commentary, because some of my questions are already answered, the nonprofit status, if in fact you were there, and so on. So I'd like to see all those things. I'm torn, because I want to see charter schools successful. I think it's a nice addition to the whole education process and everything. I also would have to learn a little bit more about charter schools, because I have to admit, I don't know all the details. I, from what I understand, it's more of a lottery, it has nothing to do with your abilities, so any child who wants to participate goes in the pool, and, well, I guess there's no pool until you exceed maybe.
That's correct.
And so, so I'm interested in it. I, I do personally have to learn a lot more.
Well, we're limited to a hundred and eighty students in our school.
Right.
We have twenty students in every class type of thing for other reasons, for teaching type of reasons, but we're limited to a hundred and eighty students. We can't go any higher than that.
And it is completely open.
And that's why it is a lottery, and there is, you know, a waiting list type of scenario.
Right.
Because we're limited.
Yeah. And the prime office space is deadly, though, I have to say.
Yes.
That's why I never want the library built up in the library property. That's golden property, that should be sold commercially, so.
I'm sorry, do you want to answer?
I, I was just going to say that the facility that we're in was vacant for over five years before we moved in.
Oh, good point.
And there's still upstairs in the building, three-quarters of the upstairs are still empty.
Eileen?
I'm not a positive or negative, but I just want to make sure that you understand that if you do adopt the RSA, that applies to any charter school that wants to come to Merrimack, in any building, anywhere, however many there are that decide to come.
Okay, so the adoption of one would automatically be applicable to anyone else?
Right. So looking at the lease is interesting for this one particular one, but it doesn't, you know, it doesn't answer all the questions as far as what may come down the road.
Interesting. Dan?
Something that I just learned on the fly, side talking.
Kibitzin again.
I apologize to that. I have to kind of take back my wholehearted endorsement, because there's a little-known fact here that I kind of missed, which is very important. So I want the land, the landlord has a three-million-dollar building, he pays thirty-eight thousand dollars a year in taxes. However, if he gets a tenant like a charter school, maybe his tax bill is now only twenty-seven thousand, or, or less. So as a guy who wants to cut taxes, I also understand the need of, of having revenue to run the town and on a three-million-dollar building, or the next five-million-dollar building, whatever. It's a little grayer now for me, knowing that in the future, we could be setting up a lot of buildings that are getting tax, special tax exemption, and getting hundreds of thousands of dollars less in revenue from those properties, from all good tenants, could be, if we had, grow from one charter school to two or three, it gets a little bit murkier now on the benefit for the town, if we're knowingly going to be getting a lot less tax, tax revenue from those very valuable buildings. So I just want to make sure, I, I wasn't clear on the issue before, but now it's a little bit clearer for me what, what the ramifications could be. And that doesn't mean I'm going one way or the other now, I just really don't know. It's too new.
There's a lot of stuff to, to think about in dealing with this whole thing.
To think about, sure.
And, and the impacts, and the potential impacts as you, as you, as you look down the road, and it's, you know, it's, you know, it's not an easy thing, and this piece of legislation is junk, by the way.
It's.
There's no guidance in there.
No, it's, the RSA is roughly written, to be kind.
There's no anything in there that provides, that provides you or us with any guidance about how we're supposed to consider this thing. It says, oh, you can do this. Oh, and if, if you don't like it, you can go to the state.
Yeah.
Okay, and oh, by the way, it's the landlord that has to make the application every year. So, which is the same thing for any other charitable organization, by the way. They have to do the same thing. So I mean, but it's, I, I looked at the, I looked at the statute, and I went, this is a piece of crap.
Tell us how you really feel.
I understand that. I understand that, but it's just, you know, this is, this is, you know, oh, we're going to do this wonderful thing, and they don't sit there and they don't push it out to the, to the logical conclusion that you might come to, or, or, you know, circumstances. So now we've got to go look at the legislative history of this thing, what the, what are they thinking about when they put this together?
What was the intent? Jack?
Nancy, it did occur to me, especially something that Tom said that triggered this thought, there might be another path. The, uh, I don't think I like the RSA either, because I think that, uh, one of you was right when you said all charter schools will be, I think, uh, will be, we'd be bound to everyone, not just you who, who was gotten through all the hoops, um, all the accreditations, all of it, uh, to your great credit. There's nothing wrong with being approached by, by a landlord. There's nothing wrong with an individual approaching the town and saying, uh, you know, making his case without having to go through an RSA and have a blanket approval. Because it's really his problem, not yours. And you can negotiate a lease yourselves.
Never thought of that, that's a, that's a good one, Jackie. Never thought of it that way.
Are there any other comments or questions? Is there? Apparently there is.
So are we saying that we can do a pilot?
No.
I don't think they were saying anything right now.
I'm just, that's how I'm interpreting Jackie's comments. Payment and move taxes.
I don't think she was going there.
Well, well. I could, you know?
Yeah, but that would be.
Whatever.
It's, it's another deal with the landlord again, it has nothing to do with.
No, no, it doesn't, no, it doesn't, but, and that's, that, I think is, um, incontrovable.
Yeah, we're solely the beneficiary.
Yes.
Of having more money available for our, to run our, to run our school.
Definitely. And I'm not sure, if you'll pardon me, I don't know how much that's in the town interest. You know, it's slightly, you know, it's.
Eileen?
Uh, I just, you know, obviously, as we, we've gone through this, we understand there's a lot more to think about and in terms of implications, um, for the future and other types of facilities. But, you know, if you take it one step further and you give an abatement for one or a payment in lieu of taxes for one, somebody else comes and asks for one and is a charter school and had, and mirrors what, similar to what they're doing, you would lose in court. So.
I guess, just in finishing, I guess, my, all the very well points have been made. I guess part of me is looking at how many Merrimack students are in the school. And I think there's a certain amount of, I, I feel a certain amount of responsibility for those students, but not for other students that come from other cities, towns. It's just one of those variables that I would take into consideration. If there was a way of proportionally doing something, that would be a different story, but I don't believe that is in there, so.
Well, we're, we're, it, it's essentially asking us to subsidize the other one hundred and sixty students in the school that don't live in town. And asking our, our taxpayers to subsidize it in that fashion.
And there's no option to proportionalize it.
Yeah.
Not in the RSA, but that doesn't mean that you couldn't take our own path.
Right, so that's, again, another consideration that we could discuss.
No, 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 no.
Boy, he's making his feelings really well-known today.
Had the legislature thought that we could do our own path, they would give us the authority to do our own path. If the statute is silent, we don't have the authority.
I think we do, Tom, because there are times at a non-public session that we make our own, um, determinations of, um, what somebody owes.
It's not quite the same fact. It's different, Jackie.
Okay.
It's taxes being abated.
Yes, Tom?
Those people that know and can read this better than I can, is there anything in here that suggests that the owner must rebate the tax reduction to the charter school?
No.
I mean, it, it, this just says that we would tax the property less. Why do you think you would get eighteen or twenty-eight thousand dollars? Did, did, has the owner put that into the lease agreement, that if he's charged less in taxes, he would refund that to you somehow?
We would get that in writing for you.
Right.
Oh.
Do you have a net?
We'd make it, make it part of the lease.
Probably triple net, Jackie.
That's an excellent question.
It's a modified gross, it's a modified gross lease.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent question.
Yeah, okay. But he pays the taxes.
He pays the taxes, but our, our, um, the, the lease is based on the per square foot and the CAM charges, which includes the property tax.
Okay. All set, any other questions or? Okay, thank you very much for coming before us.
Thank you for having us and for considering.
Thank you very well, thank you.
Thank you for your support and come visit our school, we'd love to show you what a charter school is in action, so thank you.
Get a perspective. Okay, uh, I'm going to make a decision without consider, without objection, I wanna say consideration. I'm gonna be moving the Eagle Scout presentation to now before the public hearing. And I wanna thank Matt Casperius for going along with this, because he's the one who's gonna be delayed. And we wanna make sure that Blake, although I heard he doesn't have to get early for school, but we make it a habit to bring these kinds of presentations as early as possible so they can get it up to school if they need to. So Blake, why don't you come on down? This has to do with, this is the new business number two, Eagle Scout Project Discussion submitted by candidate Blake Bournemouth to present an Eagle Scout Project Proposal to the Town Council. And you can introduce your co-table sitter.
So, can everyone hear me well? Is that okay now?
Better.
All right, so my name is Blake Bournemouth, I'm the SPL of Troop four two four and I am gonna be presenting or proposing my Eagle Scout Project, which is gonna be the Spalding Foundation Cleanup. This is Mr. Haddad, he is an ASM of our troop and he's come here with me to help propose and bring up anything that I might have forgot for the Eagle Scout Project. So my proposal, um, just to the bare minimum, just covering everything, is getting rid of all the overgrown vegetation that's on the Spalding Foundation, um, getting rid of the fence that is pre-existing and putting up a plaque on the rock that is on this trail. So going into further detail, the Spalding Foundation is the foundation of a building that was made by Captain Spalding, who was one of the first, very first settlers in New Hampshire. And when you go through the trail, if you look at the map on the second page, the third to last one, it's just a map of the Spalding Foundation and it says "Foundation" here. When you're going down that red trail and you're going past the Spalding Foundation, you can't tell what it is. It's just a square of trees and grass and.
Is it this one?
I, I hate to bother you. Can you back up a little bit and talk about where the Spalding Foundation is, what trail you're talking about, what piece of property? Uh, I mean, just the public's watching and not understanding, and I'm sitting here and have no clue what you're talking about. So if you could just give us a little background on where you're locating you, that would be great.
So the Spalding Nation is, if you want to go to the closest entrance to the Horse Hill Nature Preserve, it's on Horse Hill Nature Preserve. That is where the Spalding Nation is. It is located directly off Old Kings Highway and that is connected to Garard Drive in Merrimack. If you go down, it's near Wasserman, you can get to it by Amherst Street. Um, it's on Horse Hill Nature Preserve. And if you go down the Old Kings Highway and then go onto the first trail, you will meet up with the loop trail and then you take a right. You can see it, it has the Old Kings Highway, it's un dotted by the question mark. You go down Old Kings Highway, take the right, you're on the loop trail and then you see the Spalding Foundation. Okay, so what the Spalding Foundation? Um, it's really overgrown and I'm gonna get rid of all the grass and foliage that is there, all the vegetation. You can't even tell what it is, there is no plaque saying what it is. And it is a very historical site on the Horse Nature Preserve and it should be known to the public who's walking down it. And if you look at the fence, you can see on the pictures on the second page that it's bending over and it's not even pressure-treated wood, it's just been there as a safety precaution that was made hurriedly. It wasn't meant to mean anything other than just to set a requirement needed for the foundation. So I will be getting rid of that fence and putting up a new fence. And it is gonna be of, uh, split-rail design, you can see in the second to last page. And it will have seven posts on each end, not including the corners pieces. And then it will be, if you have the seven posts, it's gonna end up being ten-foot long posts on each end. So it'll be a full eighty on each side with all those posts and the lengths, two lengths going through each post. So that's my fence design. Um, the size of the fence, we don't know how big the house is, so there isn't really a meaning to the fence that's there. And there isn't much of a meaning to the fence that I'm gonna be putting up, more than, than this is a guideline that here is the Spalding Foundation and just presents what is there. And no, and there isn't a set boundary or anything there tells we should do this, cause this is a historical site and this is how big it is, so it should go around this, there's no information on that. So I don't, I don't have anything to say for that.
Go ahead, Dan.
Just explain again what, describe what the, the Spalding Foundation is and what, and what it's supposed to represent.
Okay, of course. So the Spalding Foundation is basically the cellar hole of the house that was made by Captain Spalding. Um, he built it in the seventeen eighties, he came to New Hampshire around seventeen fifties, bought land. This house was built by him for his son, um, when he became old enough to have a house and make a living off himself. So that house is made by one of the first settlers and he also brought over plants and other things that were from where he originally came, so there are lilacs and grapes and other, um, seventeen hundreds farm life plants that are still there and growing. At this time of the year, you can't see it, but when you go in during the spring and through the summer, it's easily visible, but not in this vegetation. You can't tell anything what's here and it is very important that, that is conserved. I don't need to necessarily make sure every last piece is there, so I don't need to be completely careful. If some of it is brought up when I am taking out the vegetation come this early spring, it is fine. The, uh, Horse Nature Reserve Committee is fine with that. I'll be leaving as much as I can, but if I do take some out, it's not a problem. So my plan is to get rid of everything in the middle. And you can see on the pictures on the first page, there is all the foliage and the rock wall that is the edge of the cellar and there's stumps and who knows what else under there. I found a metal, the, the corner piece of, I don't know what it is, but it may be a metal cage and I have no idea. But anything that we do find will be saved for historical use, um, brought to Historical Society as an archaeological fi, uh, find and see what it is, maybe we can find it out, maybe it's important in some way. So I'll be clearing out everything in the middle, everything around it. And I'll be taking down trees that are surrounding the Spalding Foundation. So, uh, the trees I'm taking out, I'm only cutting them down for the purpose of future, um, planning, cause if they fall during inclement weather, it will break the fence, go on top of the Spalding Foundation. And these trees are overhanging the fence. So taking them down just gets rid of a future risk of breaking what is there or what will be there. And for taking down trees, any type of power, power tools, people under eighteen will be using it. So safety cautions for everything will be used for scouters and adults. Um, for my, for the plaque that I want to propose, um, I need to do a Boston Stud plaque design on to this rock that I think is perfect for the plaque. If you look at the third picture on the second page, there's just the rock, it's right next to the trail going past the Spalding Foundation. And there's almost amazingly already a flat spot on the rock, so.
It's waiting for you.
Exactly, it's, it's there. It's perfect, so I don't even have to sand anything down. If I do need to, it's gonna be almost minimal, bare minimal. And if I do need to, I do have it put into my expenses. So I'll be putting in the plaque onto the rock, I'll be putting in the fence around the Spalding Foundation, clearing everything. Um, not everything, but covering all the vegetation that's not needed and make it presentable so people can walk by and say, oh, look at the Spalding Foundation, not look at all this forest, basically.
Look at all those rocks.
Right, exactly. So I'll be clearing around it and vegetation will be, uh, this is for getting rid of what I'm taking out, so I don't leave a mess when I'm done the project. Um, all the vegetation we brought out and pushed over this hill, it's on the side of the Spalding Foundation, so you can't see it and it's not in the way of trails pre-existing, so people don't have to walk around it or on it. And the fence will be brought to the dump. So we have a way of getting to there with vehicles, so we can bring in all the materials. So bringing the materials there and taking any old materials out is not a problem. We have a way, the gate on the Old Kings Highway off of Garard Drive is easily accessible to trucks and vehicles. Um, not big trucks, like just a truck someone, no consumer would own. Um, for the price, I did not include any donations by Home Depot or anything and I really overestimated to a nice number, I didn't underestimate anything. So it does come out to be around a thousand dollars for the fence and for the plaque. And we are in the granite state, so there are rocks in the ground. And if the pillars don't wanna go into the ground, there is concrete that can be used to put under the ground and then cover that with dirt if, uh, the post itself doesn't go deep enough for it to be stable for the fence. So there's the fence, there's clearing everything, and the tools will be brought out by many other adults that we have in our troop. So power tools are not hard to find. Cutting them, we have, um, those, everyone can cut any posts that need to be shorter, longer, things aren't exact. So we have ways of getting the materials there, fixing it so we can use it, making the split-rail design possible. Um, taking everything out, putting the plaque into the rock. And our troop knows someone who specializes in plaques, but he's not a public person. So he is kind of a private plaque dealer. And, um, Anita Crager in our troop, she knows this person and I can go to her and she can get him to help me with the plaque and put it into the rock and get it done nicely.
Anybody in need of vouchers for are good with.
She must be psyched about it, yeah.
Yeah.
Just right in her world.
Yeah, she, she really, she's something else, she's like.
The project or the plaque on the rock?
All of it.
Yeah.
All of it.
She had nothing to do with this project.
Yeah, right.
And the Historical Society and the Horse Nature Reserve are really glad and they expressed their happiness that they, this project's being done.
Eileen?
Yes.
How did you find out about, um, what the site was and the history of it and all that? Is it, is it written somewhere or?
So, um, for the history and me finding out about the project, the Horse Nature Reserve came to our troop and said, hey, we have this project, who wants to do it? And I was like, I can do it. So I took the project and started going into more information and wanted to learn about it. And the Historical Society has documents and Horse Nature Reserve has documents. And for whatever reason, they have separate documents and not shared documents, so I was, I was able to go through both and bring it together and look at it.
So now both have the same document?
Not yet, but I have shared it.
Okay, you have to share.
Yeah, yep.
One expanded document.
Yeah, exactly, and there's a lot of information and it was really interesting reading about it and how he came over and who he was as a person, he was like a loud, boisterous person and, it's like a very loud person, but he was nice. Um, it didn't say where he came from, it just said he arrived in early seven, middle seventeen hundreds.
Okay. Very cool, that's right.
Two hundred years later and someone's still talking about this guy, right? I mean, that's pretty amazing.
They won't be talking about me into it, he hasn't.
To find out the personal details, that's really fun, yeah.
Now, will that be on the plaque with a little bit more details like that?
Yeah, um, I will definitely be putting, when he came, it was made by Captain Spalding. And Spalding is spelt S.P.A.L. instead of S.P.A.U. Most people spell it N. And that's the historically correct spelling of Spalding. It's become accepted either way, but having the historically correct way, I thought would be a nicer approach to the plaque.
But as much information as possible that you could put on a plaque or something, cause that really does add the value. Bill?
Thanks, ma'am chair, appreciate it. Um, Blake?
Yes.
Thank you for the presentation, really good job, I'm really impressed with this. I was able to scratch Anita Crager's name off my list, obviously she's been helping you with this. But in reading through some of the meeting minutes, I know you're gonna be working with Deb Huffman on identifying some of the, uh, the plant life that surround the foundation, I might encourage you to outreach to either Bob McKay or somebody from the Agricultural Commission who has, they've done a lot of work, they've done some work with the UNH, uh, Extension School regarding horticultural type issues. And he may, you know, they may not have the historical perspective, but I'm certain that they might be able to help you identify what needs to be yanked and what doesn't need to be yanked. That way you're, um, creating the best presentation possible of preserving, um, how that site would have looked some two hundred some odd years ago.
Right.
So that's just my only suggestion and thank you very much again. Like I, I think we've all said on, on numerous occasions, we love Eagle Scout Projects. We love it when somebody goes into a place like Horse Hill, which is one of our crown jewels and leads to leave their mark and make it a little bit better than, than what it was before. So I can't even begin to thank you, to you and to your ASM and, and all the other volunteers that are gonna help you out with the project, it's a big deal. So thank you.
Thank you.
Jackie?
Yes, um, I also wanna continue with Bill's line, uh, that, um, I just, uh, really feel the need of Deb Huffman and Lynn Wens have been right at the beginning and I'm sorry, I probably left somebody out on those, but those two people have been involved with Horse Hill from the very beginning. And, um, I, I did wanna say too that Lynn, uh, did all the plantings and the, you know, sign boxes. And so you do have some, some other, some people right there too who, who can give, and I'm sure have been giving you good advice for plants. I just can picture it, cause the pictures are beautiful that you did take, even though they're overgrown, it'd be really pretty.
Those pictures only are on the inside of the foundation, it's kinda been tracked. Th- those pictures only are on the inside of the foundation, it's kinda been trapped within, so I actually walked inside the foundation, and most of those are pictures coming from the inside out. So, you can't, that rock wall, you can't even see it from the outside. It's not visible at all, it's just a lot of-
How, how large is the area approximately?
Um, maybe like ten to ten feet, twenty feet.
Okay.
And it's not a very big area, but it's, it's nice, it's around shoulder level, the, the wall itself.
Oh, it is, okay. Wow.
It's kinda like built into the land a little bit on the backside, and then, then it comes out in a U shape.
I see.
Um, I do wanna spec- um, make sure for the plaque, I'm not gonna be using copper, it's been expressed to me that copper gets stolen, so.
Isn't that sad, for watching it?
Yep. So, I- So, I will be using so- something like stainless steel for my plaque, and I'll be using that Boston Stud method and putting into the plaque, so it can't be easily taken out. It, it's a more permanent way of putting a plaque into a surface, solid surface.
Nice. Okay. Now, uh, we need a motion of approval, I believe.
Madam Chair, I move that the Town Council approve the Eagle Scout project of the Spalding, uh, Spalding Foundation cleanup for Blake Bormuth.
Okay, motion made by Bill Boyd, second by Finley Rothhouse. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Not opposed, seven, zero, zero. Now, there's some paperwork I have to sign.
It's true.
If you have it here, I'll be happy to sign it. I have a pen. I know, this is one of my nicer jobs.
Yeah.
And I always have to-
Better tell her where to sign.
Counselor District approval, right?
Beneficiary.
Oh.
This is my scout master, this is the committee, and then this is the Eagle Board.
Ah, and I'm not, and this is not the Eagle Board?
No.
Four twenty-four is what, what chapter? Who's wants this?
Um, Our Lady of Mercy.
Wonderful. I understand May twenty-fifth is kind of an important date for you?
Yes, my birthday is on May twenty-fifth, so I'm doing fundraising done in December. You need to go back to your microphone.
You need to sit down.
Sorry, today's seventeen-three.
Okay, yes, so my birthday is May twenty-fifth, so I do have to get the project finished and prove it's finished by then. I don't see a problem as of right now, 'cause I can get the fundraising done through December and January, and then start the actual bringing in of materials before the spring, so materials can be brought there or not brought in, taken out, so the old fence can be taken out, and things that are already there can be taken out before we can start putting in the fences and everything's ready. Oh, um, that is, May twenty-fifth is my eighteenth birthday, so that is the deadline for being a scout and scouting, so once you are eighteen, you're officially considered an adult in the Boy Scouts, so you can no longer work on your Eagle project when you turn eighteen.
So you have a little bit of moving to do.
It's a hard deadline.
Well, we've done our part, so. There you go.
Good learning lesson about hard deadlines.
Yeah, it is, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well done.
Thank you very much.
I don't think so.
Thank you very much, Blake, and, uh, as Bill, yeah. As, uh, Counselor Boyd has said, we really do enjoy hearing them, and a lot of times it's unexpectedly pleasant. I mean, who was thought we were gonna talk about a foundation and be so thrilled? So, so thank you very much, we appreciate what you're gonna do, and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now I gotta find my agenda packet. Where the heck is it? There it is. Okay, back onto the normal sequence. Public hearing, proposed changes to Chapter one forty-two Parks and Recreation Area submitted by Parks and Recreation Director Matthew Casperius, and he's gonna be with us for the remainder of the meeting. Town Council will hold a public hearing to consider the proposed changes to Chapter one forty-two Parks and Recreation Areas of the Town Code pursuant to Charter Article five dash three. Good evening, Matt.
Good evening. I think you guys just like to have me at last every night.
Well, fortunately, it's not ten o'clock.
Welcome to the team.
You, you have no sympathy.
It's all good. So, as we move towards the completion of the dog park, again, hopefully end of the month, beginning of December, um, final timeline's still up in, in, um, up in the air a little bit. We had basically three proposed changes to the Chapter one forty-two of the Parks and Rec ordinances. First one was one forty-two dash one, the legislative intent adding the name Merrimack Dog Park, listing it as an official park within the town, and since we were doing that, we also noticed at the time that Bishop Field wasn't listed, and, and so we thought we'd take that opportunity to add that as well. One forty-two dash nine on animals currently says that in a park, a dog has to be on a leash, and so we needed a statement that said basically that there's an exception that they can obviously be ins- off-leash inside the dog park. And then lastly, again, since we were making some changes anyway, um, the current ordinance doesn't make any reference to the new parking lot that we built at Wasserman Park down by the beach, um, so we added, uh, language to that so that it identified it as specifically as a resident parking lot. Um, and that's basically the summary of the, the changes that we've, we're proposing tonight.
Counselor? Tom?
I probably should've asked this question last time, but why do we specify very specific parking lots like that? Why don't we just say designated parking lots identified by the town or Town Council or something like that?
The existing ordinance does, we continued that, that naming, and, and again, with that new lot, we wanted it to, you know, we had said when we built that lot that we wanted it to be a resident lot, so we wanted it officially said, you know, to that, to that, uh, I think Paul has something to-
Paul?
This goes back to when, um, the discussion of Wasserman Bar- Park, Natoclick Lake Beach Front was taking place, and at that time, the, uh, Town Council Board of Selectmen designated the two parking areas, one being for town residents to use the waterfront, and the other one being designated that anybody can use the conservation trails, which are the other side of Wasserman Park, and this is just an extension of that to continue with the naming convention that happened back when the Town Council Board of Selectmen at the time designated the two parking lots.
So, it's to be consistent with previous-
Previous boards.
So, we're saying here that if you park in the spot near the Parks and Rec office, you have to have a resident sticker in your car?
That's what currently exists, yes. A sticker or a transfer sta- uh, a placard or a transfer station sticker.
So, if you wanna go walking on the trail into Wasserman, then you-
Then you would park on the one, on the other side of the park by the, by the park exit.
It was, it was also for patrol, for police, when they're patrolling it?
Actually, I thought the parks were the other way around, I didn't realize that they put it there, but. I, okay. It's probably not the point of this particular hearing, but it really seems silly to me, but anyway. Thank you.
Any other questions? Good a motion?
Go open the hearing.
Oh, thank you. That is the bane of my existence in these public hearings. Yeah, that, that's the worst, is right. Okay, is it really eight forty-eight? Apparently it is. Open, eight forty-eight? Eight forty-five?
It didn't really matter.
Well, it's the reflection. And there's nothing to be seen, so no one here, so I'm gonna close it at eight forty-six. Now I will open.
Madam Chair, I move this to the consent agenda for the next meeting.
Second.
Move to consent agenda, the motion by Bill Boyd, second by Tom Mahan. In discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No opposed.
Okay. So, it's seven, I'm sorry, six, one, zero, opposition, Tom Koenig. Okay, Matt, uh, you just sit right there while we do a couple of things before we get back to you. Okay, legislative updates from state reps, I think that's gonna be fast because there's gonna be a lot. Tom Mahan's report, Eileen?
Okay, um, the first thing is, um, that, uh, at the next meeting, we're gonna have our contract assessor, Lauren Martin, from Avatar here, to, uh, explain a situation that, uh, she discovered as part of-
It's the fifteenth, it's not the next one, is it?
Oh, I thought that it was the next one, okay, on the fifteenth, she's coming on the fifteenth.
December fifteenth.
Um, and she's going to, um, be going over, um, a, um, issue that she discovered, uh, in, um, in the tax warrant that involves the incorrect billing of, um, of non, some of the nonprofits in town. So, uh, Lauren will present that to, on the fifteenth, and, um, give us more details about that and what that means. So, um, you know, we're just, right now, just pulling together the information and facts. So, um, here's a couple of exciting things. On, um, the sixth of December, the Planning Board will be holding its initial public hearing for the Monahan Mixed Use Project located at the corner of Continental Boulevard and Industrial Drive, adjacent to the Merrimack Premium Outlets, which, as we know, is the former, um, the hotel site, not former, but the hotel pad site that is located, um, um, near the mall property. The applicant is proposing three hundred and eighty-eight thousand square foot feet of hotel, retail, restaurant, restaurants dash conference area, office, and residential on the parcel. The Planning Board must first act on the, on the application for a conditional use permit, which is, if approved, would set the ta- the framework for future site plans and subdivisions. A mixed-use conditional use permit does not allow for construction, it only gives permission to move forward to the traditional site plan subdivision review. It's nice to see that moving forward. Um, also, another very interesting thing that everybody's been holding their breath for, for many, many, many years. The Planning Board on the sixth of December, uh, the board will hear an initial conceptual discussion, which is a non-binding work session prior to any applications being sought, regarding the redevelopment of the former Shaw's Plaza on DW Highway.
Wow.
The concept plan at this stage calls for the redevelopment of the existing building formerly occupied by Shaw's to include a new facade, roof, lighting, and HVAC system, uh, HVAC system. Two, um, new buildings with footprints of approximately five thousand and twen- twenty-four hundred square feet are proposed within the existing parking lot area. Site improvements are anticipated to include new signage, signage, drainage, landscaping, site lighting, and parking lot striping.
Use-
Uh, it's just conceptual at this point, and this is my, I don't, I'm not sure that they know. You know, it's a, I would imagine it's a, a company that's coming in, found the site to be attractive price and, uh, dress it up and, well, just-
Make it more attractive, yeah.
Anything's gonna be more attractive, I would venture to say, including demolition.
Yeah, right, preferably.
Okay, um, so, the last one is that the planning staff is working with a company seeking to relocate the facility, their, into the facility currently home to the GT Advanced Technologies formerly known as GT Solar. The company, which we, it will expect to be making a public announcement soon, is proposing to purchase the facility and take over the majority of the building. GT will maintain some kind of presence in a small portion of the building for an undetermined amount of time. The company, um, that is potentially, we're still just talking in potentials-
The theoretical company.
Theoretical company is a mix of research and development, uh, and manufacturing, and currently employs sixty-plus employees, and have stated that they will be adding more staff with no, given no specific timeframe. The town staff will hold a kickoff meeting with all the departments to do a game plan permitting for this company in the near future. Additionally, with the company, uh, the company is interested in the Economic Revitalization Zone Program through the state, which will require the staff to prepare a new economic revitalization zone application with the state. The staff will bring this forward to the council in the upcoming weeks. But, um, the point after all this is that, um, this is, the potential is that an existing manufacturing, um, company may very well be moving to Merrimack and occupying a hundred and thirty thousand square feet of existing space.
Yeah, very nice.
Bringing new jobs and it's, it's a, it's a good company.
Yeah.
So, anyway.
Well, that's good news.
Good news, that's all, that's all.
Okay, there is no consent agenda, nor is there any old business. And our last, knock on wood, I know. Uh, consideration of recreational program coordinator position for Parks and Rec submitted by Parks and Recreation Director Matt Casperius, Town Council to consider the recommended change of a part-time Parks and Recreation, Recreational Secretary position to a part-time Recreation Program Coordinator position. Eileen?
I just wanna champion this, I know I'm, I'm stealing your thunder, but, um, I, um, first of all, I would just like to say, um, what a delightful hire that Matt has been for us, um, as Parks and Recreation Director, and he has taken on, um, and he has an enormous amount of energy, he makes me tired just seeing him run back and forth you know, in front of my office every day. So, um, anyway, um, he's established an awful lot of programs, um, for various different age groups and, um, and things throughout the community, um, which we have sorely needed, has spent a lot of time working on, um, you know, uh, in- increasing, um, participation in town wide, wide events. Very surprisingly, several thousand people show up at some of these things, uh, Easter egg hunts and, and that kind of thing, and, uh, Matt ends up putting in an enormous amount of hours being the only full-time person working for the department. So, um, his other, uh, his other person that works for him on a full, on a, um, year-round basis is a part-time secretary. So, what Matt has been facing is that, given all these programs that he's putting on, he himself is the one that needs to come every time there is something, off-hours, on the weekends, and all that kind of thing, so he's putting in an enormous amount of time trying to keep these programs running. He, he doesn't have, um, not that the person isn't capable, but he doesn't have the position, he only has a secretarial position, so, um, the idea behind this is to, um, the person has left to, to get a full-time job that we currently have, and while that opportunity has presented itself, uh, Matt has suggested to me, and I think it's a very good idea, to upgrade this position, um, to a program, Recreation Program Coordinator, and put it in a different, um, wage scale. That way, this person, although, um, will still be part-time, um, for now, I, I plan on proposing a full-time per, this, this position to be a full-time position, uh, in the budget, which you can either agree to or not. But, anyway, um, but for now, what we'd like to do while the, while the opportunity is here is to put this new position in, um, a higher grade so that he can hire somebody with, um, more professional, um, experience and qualifications. So, um, anyway, I'll let you-
Actually, I think she's done a good job.
Kinda said it, yeah.
Go right ahead, Matt.
That's okay. It, just to add on to what Eileen said, you know, prior to a year ago, you know, we were still doing all of our registry- doing all of our registrations and things on, you know, paper form, and, you know, we had this massive, multi-page Excel spreadsheet just for camp and trying to keep track of payments and, and all that, and so we would spend hours trying to just track the registrations and things with camp especially. And a year ago, we went on, we went online with, you know, online registration, and with credit cards and stuff that used to take us hours are now done in essentially minutes, and people are, you know, doing a lot of the registration, so we don't even have to enter the data, and so, part, in addition to the reasons that Eileen gave, it just, we can ask them to do more, because now, the things that used to take up all this time, what are they going to do, you know, other than staff the office? And again, they can help then, you know, supervise some of these programs, they can, you know, create, continue to create new programs with me, and we can kind of just keep expanding as we go.
So, may I ask, I would assume, but let me state it, that there'll obviously be a converse change in the job description of this new position that would incorporate this designated responsibilities.
Add it to them.
Right, I mean, perhaps keeping some-
It's in the packet.
It's in the packet. Well, I'm glad I read it thoroughly.
Me too. Because I did just now.
But I wanted to do that for the public, you know, they don't have, they don't have the, they don't have the packet.
They're transparent.
Very, very good, yeah. Didn't work already. But, I mean, I think that is important to be able to know, anyway, because there is a concurrent change in the actual position functioning.
Yes.
And if it's much more integrated in working with you cooperatively, then that will have an impact on the activities that you do, and your existence and ability to do that before you, something goes wrong with you with all these hours, which we don't want that to happen either. And I do want to follow up with what Eileen said, I think we are very pleased with what's going on, and I think personally, I just feel we need to give you the support to continue with that, and I don't think it's unreasonable, but I'll leave that up to the group. Dan.
As someone, as all of you know, on the Parks and Rec liaison, as Jackie had been on the same, same committee, we've seen firsthand, really, the, it's one of those departments that, that doesn't get a lot of the attention that it deserves, you know, we're always on fire, police, wastewater, all that, but Matt really is a one-man show, and the parks have come along so much in the last several years, that it's something when the budget comes around, I can already show my, my hand here, I'm definitely going to be supporting another full-time person, because I just think that that department can handle it, needs it, the funding is there. So this, this part-time position for today, I fully support, but I'll come back to you and the rest of my colleagues come budget season to talk about a more further role on having the department a little beefed up when it comes to manpower. Thank you.
Or not spell.
I've got a couple of questions for Matt, that's not too much trouble.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Matt. In your memo, in the third paragraph down, you write that as director, my work schedule can fluctuate dramatically because I often have to staff some of these programs and special events, and my questions are how often, and what's the frequency outside of nine to five that this happens?
It changes every season, but, I mean, obviously, we have the main, the main special events, so Halloween, which is a Friday night, the Christmas Parade, which is a Sunday, we did nine eleven this year, that was a Sunday, Winter Carnival's Saturdays, Fourth of July, working that one, Easter egg hunt, you know, and then beyond that-
The movie nights?
The monthly movies, the concerts in the park, it's mostly, most of that's concentrated in the summer, but realistically, it occurs throughout the year, you know, just as, you know, as things come on.
Day camp, yeah.
And meetings.
And meetings.
Oh, that's just, meetings with us are just fluff, so.
It's just the cost of getting funds, you know, yeah.
We're still trying to figure out why you're still here.
Dean, I read the job description completely, and it reads more like an assistant-
Completely, I'm glad you did, though.
It was not meant to be a dig at you, Madam Chair.
I know it wasn't, but I couldn't resist.
I can. It, it reads more like an assistant Parks and Rec Director as opposed to a Program Coordinator, and then in your memo, you write down below, this would put the position on the same scale as the Assistant Media Services Coordinator, which makes sense considering the Media Services Coordinator is on the same wage scale as the Parks and Rec Director. So my question is, why not call it an Assistant Parks and Rec Director?
We could. Most towns tend to call it Program Coordinator, that, when there's only two, but it could be either way.
Yeah, I, I personally am opposed to that, just because it's, it hasn't reached that level, so if you look at the wages, you could see that it really is just one step above a secretary, so.
Well, I don't have the wages in front of me, because that was going to be my next question, what is the, what's, what's a grade nine wage?
It's in the memo, so.
It's here.
I see the wage, but you're looking to make it a grade nine, so I wanted to know what the range is for, for a grade nine.
It's, it's-
It's the lower limit, what's the upper limit?
Correct.
It's, I don't know if I have the upper limit on this.
And you don't have the wages here for the Media Services Coordinator or, or the Assistant, so I don't have the ability to make a-
Paul's going to get that for you in just a moment.
Did you ask about grade nine? Seventeen sixty.
Starts at seventeen forty, I want to know what the top end is.
Forty.
I want to know what the top end is.
My astigmatism.
Is it okay to move on, or should I wait for Paul?
Uh, go right ahead.
Thank you, appreciate it. What, how many hours is, is, do you envision the coordinator?
Twenty-five right now.
Twenty-five for right now, and then depending on budget cycle, will bump up to forty with the full-time?
Potentially.
Okay. How does this fit in with the, because I never quite grasped the Recreation Revolving Fund, I under, the way I understood it was that funds would come in, funds would go out, and there would be a capacity there where some of those funds would, would be used to offset some of the salaries, and I'm just curious to know, how does, how does that fit in?
Right now, with the secretary position, there is a, basically, a, the way we budgeted, it's a seventy-thirty split, so camps, for example, are paying seventy percent of the secretary's salary, so that would continue with this position as well.
I guess the last question would be for Eileen, do we know what the cost would be, full-time with, with contribution to the retirement and the benefit package?
Good question, but I, I didn't put it, I don't have it for tonight, because I'm not proposing that for tonight, I'm going to propose that as part of the budget, but I'll get that for you tomorrow, if you're interested.
Okay. I, I agree with Council Dwyer, I think there's so much going on that it justifies the full-time position, surprised that we're not looking to see a full-time position here tonight, to be perfectly honest with you. Because I think, I think, I think Matt has done a dynamite job, and I think certainly based on what I've seen over, over the course of this year, what they're doing in terms of programming and activities, it certainly justifies another, another set of hands, not just, not just twenty-five hours, but forty hours.
The budget?
I know.
I won't accommodate that.
Right, I'm just, I'm just saying that.
Paul, oh, Eileen.
I, I didn't want to, I didn't want to propose a full-time person, but there's six months left in the year, and Matt and I sat down and discussed it, you know, what would give him some relief this year, if, for the rest of the year, and we both agreed that it would be a good idea to just, at this time, propose the part-time position, with the understanding that it would be proposed in the future, because we have, we have some budget considerations to be thinking about for this year.
I understand.
But Paul, very graciously, ran down and got the numbers, so for grade eight, I'll give you both grades, grade eight was sixteen dollars and fifty-three cents to twenty-three sixty-five, and grade nine is seventeen forty to, per hour, to twenty-four eighty-six.
Paul, thanks for doing that.
And thank you for reading it, Eileen.
I'm sorry?
And thank you for reading it, Eileen.
Rob being away this afternoon. Eileen, yeah, Jackie. Jackie?
Yes, I was wondering, it's high time for this, high time, absolutely, and I was wondering if there was some way, because I know how busy you are in the summer, oh my gosh, and I was wondering if, if over the course of like a six-month period or so, that the hours could be adjusted to accommodate full-time in the summer, or thereabouts, you know, like five hours more.
Eileen? At this moment in time, obviously, things are changing, or may change, but we have been gearing up for the Affordable Care Act, and what we need to do in terms of hours, and how that relates to spans of time, contiguous, you know, span of time, you know, if you work full-time for a certain period of time, then it correlates to a full-time position, that, that kind of thing. So we're being very cautious about that at this point, and we're trying to limit it to a certain number of hours per year, and then for a person that is a, a permanent part-time person, which is what we're talking about here, not a summer helper or whatever, that it would be limited to twenty-eight hours, so that we don't-
Consistently below the thirty.
-reach over that threshold whereby, in the future, we would need to pay health insurance. Yeah.
I understand, okay.
Any other questions? Okay, I, well, it's ten to motion.
Do we have to approve this, make a motion to approve, or?
That's just what I was about to say.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Motion, go ahead.
Madam Chair, move approval of the proposal to change the designation of-
Just say, just if you establish the position of-
To establish the position of-
The recreational program coordinator.
Thank you very much, so moved.
And place it in the personnel plan wage scale at grade nine.
At grade nine.
Second.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by Dan Dwyer. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? None, seven zero zero.
Thank you, ma'am.
Excellent, thanks, Matt.
Thank you for your, thank you, Matt.
Keep up the good work, Matt, we're behind you, as you can see. Okay, minutes from October twenty-seventh.
Madam Chair, move the Thursday, October twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen minutes with following modifications.
Yep.
On page, on page five, line six, just a clarification, it reads, the probate court has released the Granite YMCA, is it known as the Granite YMCA? I thought it was Manchester.
It's known as-
It's actually known as Granite YMCA.
Okay.
Okay, then, and that being said, after Granite YMCA, where it says parentheses, property owner, could the preposition of be changed to from, because it flows smoother?
Dan. Okay, from, yes, that's fine.
Same page, line twenty-four. Is it, is, is it officially known as Brundage Lane? I thought it was Brundage Way.
It is.
It's not Lane, it's Way.
I believe it's Brundage Way.
So change later, way.
And the other thing is, did we ever, did the council ever ordain it as Brundage Way? Because this is going to really tick off Council Dwyer, it's still reflected on Google Maps as Veterans Park Drive. Just a curiosity question.
Long time ago, Paul?
Think that was done, think that was, that was done by the board of selectmen, wasn't done by- Quite a long time ago.
Fair enough.
Were you around then?
Yes.
I mean, I wasn't on the board then, it was before I got on.
It was a long time ago, it had to be right, ninety-five, ninety-six.
He's a lot older than you.
On page-
I thought it was right around the time he left the, the board.
He was right about that time.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Go ahead, Bill.
Page nine, line forty-five, Madeline Bennett, Bennett is spelt with two Ts, there are other instances in the minute where it's spelt with just one T, I'm not going to keep Council Dwyer waiting.
The Ottawa will be an autocorrect thing.
Thank you. And that's all I had.
No, it wasn't bad. Okay, you have other?
I appreciate Council Boyd's work on the minutes, quite frankly, because I, I count on that, so.
Okay, motion, but, oh, this is, we better finish this meeting soon, we're starting to pick on each other. Okay, motion made by Bill Boyd, seconded by-
Second.
That's right, you do. He wasn't a press. Seconded by Tom Mahon.
Yeah.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed, none, abstained, one, the abstention is Dan Dwyer. So it's six, zero, one. Excellent. Comments from the press, there is none, there's also no public comments from the council. Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I appreciate it. Just to let the community know, on Thanksgiving Day, the Merrimack Rotary is going to be holding the Annual Turkey Truck Five K, for more information, go to MerrimackRotary.com. Secondly, I want to commend the Merrimack Tomahawks Football Team, they, they had a hell of a year, they finished nine and two, they lost to Bedford in overtime, they thought they had won it until a flag came out of nowhere at the last minute, they got, Bedford got extra time and scored.
They got a picture of it.
So they got robbed, unfortunately, but I just want to commend, commend the team, especially the seniors, it was a great year, nine and two, get to the semifinals, Division One, that's, that's a big deal, and they have no reason to hang their head, so I just want to congratulate them for a great year. And then lastly, the YETCAC met on November ninth, very pleased that Council Mahon and Council Flood, along with, Council Flood's husband, Peter, and Bill Cummings, were in attendance, we, the YETCAC entertained David Priest, who's the Executive Director of the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission, and the topic of conversation was age-friendly and livable communities, and very high-level, big pictures, talking about how to make communities more age-centric for people, going from, you know, teenage years all the way up to people in their, in their twilight years, and it was, since some interest, there's some interesting conversations that are going on as it relates.
I'm sorry?
We were wondering about the term twilight years, I wonder if we took that-
Actually, I was thinking of age-centric, actually, go ahead.
And I, I was telling Jackie that we're not in our twilight years, only if we, your twilight, usually you think so.
He kind of left me kind of on the corner there.
We might be in the Twilight Zone.
I do.
We're always in the Twilight Zone.
Which is totally different than your twilight years.
Exactly.
Well, sometimes-
Sometimes it overlaps.
You should have seen, you should have seen the back-and-forth Council Valencourt and I had, before I left the council on the Twilight Zone, we were talking about something, and she just, I, I put a whole new spin and perspective on it for her, she just, I never thought of it that way.
The YETCAC also talked about the business survey that they're going to be putting out to the community, and that was it.
Excellent.
So, thank you.
Anybody?
Yeah, me.
Jackie?
The Public Library, our Public Library is holding their turkey shoot, I think they call it, tomorrow night, at Wasserman Park this year, so people-
That's right.
-set off for Master Coler, or High, the High School, I think it used to be, now that facility is ready to use for things like this, so it'll be at Wasserman Park, and that's always a great take, and they raise a lot of money.
Excellent.
They have all the components of Thanksgiving dinner plus a silent raffle.
Excellent. Anything missing, Tom?
I just wanted to report, the, the Planning Board had a special meeting last Tuesday to talk with Transport New Hampshire Representative about complete streets, and that's the concept of making streets functional and usable by not only cars, but also by bicycles and pedestrians, to be safer and whatnot, and they talked about what the project is and the support that they're getting out of the legislature, and potential for funding for pilot programs and things of that nature, so she sent links to a lot of information that's been gathered on the concept of complete streets. Now, we, we had quite a discussion about it, and some of the discussions centered around whether or not it's even appropriate for a town like Merrimack, which is fairly rural, at best suburban, where complete streets tend to work better in a, in a Nashua, Manchester, Portsmouth kind of vicinity, where you've got a downtown area that you want to bring people to walk and bicycle and stuff like that, but in general, just to get an idea of what it means to have a, a complete street and to be committed to that, Manchester and Nashua, I believe, have passed some kind of resolutions that they're committed to doing complete streets. And Concord was used, and as an example, this, the recently opened Main Street, or whatever, I haven't been there yet, but apparently they've- I haven't been there yet, but apparently they've made a very nice road through Concord with sidewalks and seating and retail shops and all that kind of stuff, having access. And they claim bringing more traffic into town and bringing more tax revenues and more other things, as well as making it a more comfortable place to live and, and work. So if you're interested in that information, I can certainly forward it out to the council. And then one other thing I wanted to point out is that I hadn't been aware of the upcoming planning board meetings, and I will be out of town on the sixth, so Bill, if you would be sure to cover.
I'd be more than happy to be there.
For the council, talking about those projects that Eileen just pointed out.
So December sixth?
December sixth.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Dan?
I have a, an announcement I wanted to make in advance, cause I got the budget schedule. And unfortunately, on January eighteenth, or no, January nineteenth, is a budget meeting with welfare and several other departments. I unfortunately will not be able to attend. I am traveling to Washington DC to usher in our new president to be there for the inauguration. Uh, so I will ask my colleagues for permission to allow my, my representation to the town of Merrimack, which overwhelmingly voted for President-elect Donald Trump.
You need permission from us?
And I'm gonna be leaving on a Wednesday and returning on Friday night.
Only from the chair.
Wanted to let that be known, and, thank you.
How'd you get that gig?
Forty-nine dollars one way on Southwest. And fifty-nine on the way home. And a friend in the hotel business that we got in real cheap.
Oh, good.
So.
And your transportation to and from the airport.
I have no tickets, I'm, I'm gonna be one of those blue collar guys on the sidewalk, no, no tickets to any events, just gonna kinda be there, so.
Hanging out.
Hanging out.
Trust me, you don't wanna go to any inaugural balls, if anybody here.
Somehow I don't see what it takes, and enjoying it.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll finish off, I just wanna give you an update regarding the O'Leary Center. Its renovations are done. It now looks like it's out of the nineteen-sixties, and it's actually updated, nicely done, and obviously, some of the renovations, like the doors, safety issues and things we had to do. But they're very appreciative of the support that the council has provided them as well. So they are going to be having an open house, and you're going to be invited to it. Also, it's a thank you, so as soon as we know that date, everybody will be invited. Okay? Okay, I will.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, there you go. We're fighting for the second. We'll give this to Dan Dwyer as a second. So Bill Boyd, to Dan Dwyer, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I think that was unanimous. Seven zero zero. Good night, everyone.